...interest, anyone?
Okay. Here's the logic then.
And approval of the agenda, I've got a couple additions.
Make a motion to excuse councillor Dennis from this meeting.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions?
Question is that it's for a medical reason?
Mm-hmm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. So, under ten A, I've got the May Town Council meeting, we'll have to move that. And ten B, Committee of the Whole meeting next week. Any other additions, deletions? Okay, so...
I'll ask the CAO under his report worship.
Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions?
So moved?
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
What?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so I'm gonna have a problem with your light unless we haul that. Would you do that? And maybe, yeah.
Are these down?
The one by you Natalie's okay, just those and the ones in the middle, because I can't see Wade's light or Cliff's. There now, oh, there you go, go ahead.
So, the question is, because I don't know the procedure, if I wanna add something on under my water, wanna have a water report at the regular council meeting, do I need to put it on this meeting to get it on that one, or can I do it sometime in the next, before the...
For the... No, you can do it. We are, we just run everything...
We don't have to deal with it today?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, we usually run everything through the Committee of the Whole, but it's not, it's just for information, right?
Well, why don't we just put it on today that I wanna have an agenda item for a water, a water committee report for the regular council meeting? I wanna report on a couple things we've been dealing with, Frank and George.
Ten C, we still good, everyone?
Water committee, re Lake George update.
Yep, good. Okay, so Julie, there you are, sorry, welcome. So Julie is with Nova Scotia Works, South West Employment, and you can come up, I think you know the drill?
Yes.
And...
I'm gonna set my timer too, so. You've mentioned to me about ten minutes so far, I look at my phone, I'm not, not checking email, I'm making sure that I don't talk too long, because...
It's all right. If I'm doing this, it means stop.
I'm gonna have a lot of work to do.
We're good to go.
Okay, so, thank you, council, for the invitation to be here today, I really appreciate it. Wanted to give you a brief update in relation to the Yarmouth Job Fair, a little bit about how we arrived at it and how it's shaping up. So, for those of you whom I don't know, my name is Julie Walters, and I work for a company called Nova Scotia Works. Nova Scotia Works is a relatively new provincial entity, and we're an employment services center. We're located in the Pier One building, and we help job seekers find employment, and we help employers with the retention and recruitment of their workforce. My role is to deal exclusively with employers. I've been in this role since July, and every time I meet with employers, quite surprisingly, they have vacancies, usually significant vacancies. It's gotten to the point when I meet with an employer now, one of the first questions I ask them is, well, how many vacancies do you have, and how long have you been trying to fill them, and have you given up at this point? And usually, the answer is, they can't find enough workers, and I'm running into businesses that have actually given up on going after contracts that would require an additional anywhere from twenty to a hundred people on their workforce, because they're not confident that they can find the people to fulfill their contractual obligations. So, that's my reality in my role. However, most of my coworkers in my office deal with job seekers who are having a hard time finding employment, or maybe finding meaningful work, so there's obviously a mismatch between what our employment sector needs and what our job seekers need. So, based on a lot of discussions that we've had internally, I met with a few external partners, including Natalie here with the town, and we discussed the possibility of doing a job fair, in the hopes of bringing employers together in the same room with job seekers to make some matches. And we assembled a team at the end of January, and basically dove right into preparing a job fair. We selected the date of April nineteenth, it's a Wednesday, and we will be open to the public from three-thirty in the afternoon till seven o'clock. We will have thirty local employers at the job fair with immediate vacancies, as well as five support partners who help people in the employment-related world. The employers who are on-site will have everything from entry-level positions, professional positions, managerial positions, general laborer positions, as well as student positions. There is something for everyone, and the amount of response that we have got from the private sector has been unbelievable. When we first started this, you know, we had our list, we said, okay, let's identify ten sectors, we have room for thirty employers, fingers crossed. So we worked on it really hard for about a month, and then we said, okay, let's go start recruiting employers, and we said, we're not gonna do any work, more work until we find five, and if we find five, then, okay, then it's go time. Well, we found five, we found ten, we found fifteen, we found twenty, we're at twenty-two, and twenty-two confirmed, another three or four that are right on the fence, and we're probably by the end of next week gonna start turning employers down. So, we're really, really happy with this, and the support from the job seeker side has been phenomenal as well, even though we haven't, we're not really going to be aggressively promoting the job fair until first of April, but just to kinda give you a taste, we've been doing some work to help prepare job seekers for the job fair, so some of the things that we have is we have a couple of workshops planned to help orient people, how to talk to employers at a job fair, what you need to have to be ready, all those kinds of things. We've two workshops set aside, we've done no promotion of them, and they are over maxed right now at capacity. So, we actually are looking at maybe either changing the venue or removing furniture to fit more people into the rooms. So, this is telling me we have really strong support from our employment sector, and really strong support from our job seekers. So, just to give you an idea, I put this handout on your desk, but I put it up here. So, the sectors that we have confirmed coming to the job fair, construction, manufacturing, fish processing, healthcare, tourism, financial services, technology, automotive, transportation, as well as self-employment. What I really wanna stress is, these are all local employers, and they all have immediate vacancies. So, that was key, we didn't want employers based in Halifax, based in Ottawa, based in Northwest Territories, we wanted them here, and we, basically, we targeted employers that were within a forty-five minute drive of the town of Yarmouth, and job seekers that were within a forty-five minute drive of the town of Yarmouth. So, we have employers from all over Yarmouth County and Clare. This is fantastic, and I can tell you that I've met personally with most of the employers that are coming, and if I haven't met personally with them, I've spoken to them on the phone, and every single one of them have vacancies. Argyle Township Courthouse and Archives, Argyle Lodge, Camo's, so this includes the main Camo's operation, Sea Life Fisheries, Skipper Fisheries, and Camo Marine, Edward Jones, Employment Nova Scotia, so they'll be there to talk to job seekers about wage subsidies and things that the province has available in terms of training supports to help jobs, job seekers get more ready for employment, Gee's Frenchies, IMO, Inshore Fisheries, Murray Jam, and Murray Dodge, Nikhil Home for Special Care, Nova Scotia Works, my company will be there, Rendu Pratt from Yarmouth South, Riverside Lobster, Rutgers Group Hub, Schooner Seafoods Groundfish Division, they have wonderful opportunities available. The Self-Employment Program will be there, Sip Cafe, The Meadows, Transport Declaire, University St. Don, Villa Acadienne, Web.com, Yakro, and Yarmouth Argyle Home Support. Now, this was as of two hours ago, so we have two more that, one will be confirmed tomorrow morning, so I can't say it, and we should have one more confirmed this afternoon, but again, I can't let the cat out of the bag, but they're big employers as well. So, when those two are confirmed, we'll start to become really limited in space. We're really excited for this. So, I also wanted to just let you know as a council that the support from your staff has been incredible. Natalie has been wonderful, she's led the charge on marketing, and one of your student interns, Michaela, has just, she has been a gift, I don't know how else to describe it. The marketing that she has created has been so professional, both Natalie and Michaela have been wonderful to work with, and they have taken this effort from a good idea in our minds to a fabulous idea that everybody can see, and it's just, I don't know what we would do without the support from the town. So, that's our Yarmouth Job Fair, I would encourage all of you as councillors to attend on the date. Walk around, speak with employers, speak with the job seekers, it's going to be a great event. Our intention is to hold it annually, and we will be doing surveying at the end with both job seekers and employers, and we'll be able to share those results as well.
Good stuff.
Good job.
Yeah, very good, thank you Julie, go ahead.
Julie, so you've talked to all, like, all the participating employers, do you know, because you had probably had individual conversations with every one of them, how many jobs are kind of encapsulated in this many people, like, maybe Rendu Pratt said I might need two carpenters, and Camo said I need nine people, like, if you kind of...
Yeah, so, yes, so when an employer registers, we have an online registration form, and what we ask them is what positions at the job fair they'll be recruiting for, and we also ask them what kind of support they need, because when they show up, we want them to be ready. So, instead of saying, oh yeah, I kinda need people, we want them to be ready with a job description, yes, I'm recruiting for a salesperson, I'm recruiting for a carpenter, I'm recruiting for a mechanic, I'm recruiting for a machinist, dah 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 dah. So, if we were to be in my office, I could go through this list and say, yep, this person needs this, this, but what we are going to be doing is, all the job seekers that arrive will produce a show guide, and there'll be a, basically, a one-hundred-word biography, for lack of a better word, with each employer, where we say, basically, like, this employer does X, Y, Z, like, this employer works in the construction industry, they have vacancies for these positions, and this is what it's like to work for the employer, so they offer benefits, or, you know, you get an extra week's vacation, or who knows what. So, but what I can say, just in looking at this in terms of actual numbers, vacancies, oh, so if we were to include upcoming contracts that employers are looking for, like, let's say, within the next year, I don't know, usually, probably three hundred, three hundred and fifty positions?
There's jobs.
There's jobs.
There's jobs, and, and, so my question was...
And this is just who's on this list, because I have other employers that aren't attending here, but also have major vacancies.
So, so my, part of the question is, I think, you all, you get really tired of people saying there's no jobs, there's jobs.
There's jobs.
There's, there's jobs. So, you're doing, you're doing media once you hit the first of April?
Yes.
Maybe talk to Gary, vote a Weekender or something like that?
Yeah.
It's just, people need to know there's jobs.
Yeah, I can actually say CJLS has come on board as a sponsor, so we'll be doing some advertising with them. I believe there's a Weekender lined up.
Excellent.
And we'll really start the, like, a real promotional push, there'll be some print media and social media that's starting in April, and then we also have one of the staff persons with Tri-City Regional School Board lined up to promote it within the schools, but this isn't just an event for students, this is really for all ages, for all skill levels and all kinds of backgrounds.
Good stuff. Go ahead.
First off, congratulations, and it's true, there's a narrative here that needs to be changed. There's not a job shortage, there seems to be more of a labor shortage, as far as it goes. But you were saying before, there are plenty of job seekers that you're dealing with as well. Can you kind of explain, or maybe you can't, the disconnect between one and the other? Is it just a matter of communicating there's a need, or are there certain qualifications required that the job force just doesn't have?
It's, it's a very, I think, complicated problem that we have, and every day, I think I've unpacked one more piece. So, I think part of it is a communications problem. So, I've met with many employers that I think are doing fine. A-one, part of my job is, every day, I post links to positions that are advertised as vacant, so I'm very aware of who's advertising. So, I'll meet with an employer, and I think, yeah, they're A-one, and then we get to chatting, and it turns out they've been trying to recruit a mechanic for two years, or fish processors, or a bookkeeper, or a manager, or so-and-so, and so-and-so, but then when I ask a question, okay, what does your job description look like? Well, we don't really have one. Okay, how have you been advertising it? Well, I, I asked everybody that works here if they knew of anybody, so that's a bit of a challenge, in that it's a little bit, we, we kinda have a bit of an old-school recruitment mentality that we have to change. That, that, that's a big challenge, and I think a lot of employers are acknowledging that, that we have to really step up our game there. We have a skills mismatch down here, there is absolutely no doubt about it. We have a lot of demand for skilled trades, and NSCC is, they're a great institution, but sometimes it's hard to expect maybe somebody who's forty or forty-five, or even twenty-five with a couple of kids, to move to the city, or to Picto, to retrain, and then come back here. So, that's part of the challenge, and then we're working on that solution outside of the job fair, so I have to leave after here and go to a meeting where we're doing skills training for line cooks and prep cooks in the restaurant industry to... So, that's a small piece of the puzzle, but there, there's a huge skills mismatch that we have to address. And then I think sometimes job seekers, they're, sometimes maybe not confident enough to go out and approach our employer, so that's hopefully what, a little bit of what this job fair will change, but it's a more complicated problem than we just have to get people in the same room. This is kinda step one of a multi, multi-effort process, but it's, you know, and then part of it is, we, we also need immigration. I hope that answers your questions.
Cliff?
So, the last word you mentioned is the one that I'm interested in. So, if you need immigration, what are the chances of accessing the province's program and the Fed program? I had a situation where somebody applied to come to Canada from any European country, I think a year ago, little over a year ago. Person was very well-qualified to work at a number of trades, many of which are applicable here, and they were turned down by the embassy in Vienna. I don't know whether it was because they were focused on bringing people here from Syria or what, but it, it didn't seem like it was simple.
I'd say immigration is really challenging, and I'd say it's even more challenging in Atlantic Canada, we were capped in terms of immigrants. The new pilot project that's been announced for Atlantic Canada, I think that holds potential, because it allows employers to, kind of, how do I wanna say this? It allows employers to attract people and bring their families, and look at long-term resettlement and citizenship here in the country, and it, but it's not an easy solution to get people here. There's the nominee program, there's the temporary foreign worker program, there's the new pilot project, so there's a lot going on. Part of the other challenge in relation to immigration is, we don't really have a lot of real, true experts or immigration consultants right here in our community in order to work in immigration, you have to be licensed and certified, and there's a certification process, and it takes about ten months, and closest one is an HRM, and even if you do a comparison of Atlantic Canada, kind of, people that specialize in that area, it's very much focused on Western Canada, so there's work to be done there as well.
So, to follow up, just what you've said now tells me that, it sounds like there's a disconnect from the rhetoric from the federal government on immigration and the need for it, and the, what's the big report we're supposed to be following in Nova Scotia?
Yeah, the one in Nova Scotia.
And what Nova Scotia says is a result of that survey we just filled in the other day, which I can't, I, I had a hard time figuring that out, by the way. Didn't really figure it out, guessed on some of them, but I always did good in school guessing. You know, you can get fifty percent just by guessing and some of that stuff. But seriously, I think there's a disconnect, I think there's a disconnect between the rhetoric of the, of the federal government, and it may be because the politicians find that the bureaucrats are not capable of carrying out what the politicians say they want to do on the question of immigration, and the need for immigration in Canada. And I don't know how you get through it, but I think one way is to make noise. The other question I have is, how much is it a disincentive for the type of social supports that exist in our community, which, you know, I mean, I, I go up and down the street every day and see able-bodied people that aren't working, I mean, I, I'm in and out of Thames twice a day here, Main Street, Yarmouth, and I see people that could be working and aren't, and that ties into how much the people are, these employers are prepared to pay.
I think it's, the social supports that we have available, I, I don't know if it's fair to say that they are discouraging people from working.
I think it's fair to say they're not encouraging some people to come to work.
So, I, you know, everybody has their own background and their own personal story, and what we see in our office is, we see a lot of people, well, actually, we see people from a variety of backgrounds, education levels, income levels, I can only, you know, I don't know, I guess it's just hard for me to speak to that. What I will say is, I think there's a lot of opportunity in this area, and I think that when we do activities like this, to educate people, when we do trainings such as the Restaurant Works Program and other skilled trades, it provides, hopefully, encouragement and inspiration, and it also provides data to show people that there's jobs out there, and then we have to rely on our partners within the community to help make those connections as well. So, there's jobs.
Is there enough daycare, I know there's jobs, because of the work I do in the sector I'm in, but is there enough daycare around for single moms?
Daycare spots, I'd say probably not, and I'd say the real other challenge is, the cost of daycare is extremely prohibitive. I have an eighteen-month-old, I pay thirty-six dollars a day.
But that brings a question of subsidized daycare, to get work, to get single, well, to get people out from under their obligations in the home, to be able to go to work and still be able to afford to go to work and have proper daycare for the children.
Yeah, well, I pay a hundred and eighty dollars a week, and I have a, you know, I'm, I'm not a millionaire, but I, I don't make minimum wage, and daycare is very cost prohibitive.
Do they allow you to, this is a personal question, don't answer it if I'm intruding, is there any favorable tax treatment for you on that?
I can claim childcare at tax time, I, it's not a one-hundred percent rebate, but it, I mean, it offsets, but...
It helps, so that is available?
It is available, but, you know...
But you've gotta have an income to be even...
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, it's, there's, there's a lot to this, and like I said, every day I unpack another piece, and I think, oh, this is, this is it, and then, gosh, a few days later, stumble upon another problem, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Good to go.
Okay, so, I hope to see you all on the nineteenth, and again, kudos to your staff.
Yeah, they're good, they're great. Thanks, Jewel.
You're welcome.
Okay. Report, CAO report? Go ahead.
Your worship, I've circulated my report on the agenda. If you have any questions, the report, as you know, consists of the motions of council, the action that's been taken on them, and as well, I've attached a sub-report which is specific to the priorities of council as identified in our priority setting session, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
No questions for the CAO? Oh, sorry, didn't even see it, Phil.
Thank you, your worship, and maybe Jeff, not to the, your priority update, but do you have an opportunity to look at today's paper and Minister Churchill's statement about expenses?
No.
Okay.
I did.
Okay.
We're already there.
We're already there, right?
We've launched since been doing.
Yes.
We've launched since been doing. Please, to...
I came on the council, what is being implemented across the province by, as a result of...
What they want implemented across the province.
Yeah, what they want. Yep, good stuff. Fire Department report, welcome, chief. So, so we've got the report, and we also have the strategic priorities for the fire department. Any questions for the chief? Looks like you're good to go.
No.
Oh, no, I don't, he's, he just keeps it on. Casey needs to say something, we're used to it. You're as good with that as you are with your email. Oh, my goodness, okay, planning department, there's no one here, but if anybody has questions, Maurice is available. Go ahead.
Your worship, just for council's information, our planning consultant will be here, second week of March, the, the week of our council meeting, and he will be attending, sorry, April, what did I say?
You said March.
Yeah, second, second week of April, time's flying. He will be here for the council meeting, we do have some planning matters on the agenda, but he will also be here a couple of days ahead of that, so if there are any questions or issues related to planning that you'd like to meet with him, I'm sure that Judy would be willing to take appointments, and he'd be more than happy to meet with you.
Thank you. Financial Department report, you're on, Jerry. So, I was gonna say this, I know you're gonna run, run through this point by point?
Not necessarily.
Okay, and if we need more time, there's an opportunity next week.
Yeah, this is, this report is just the capital budget, where we've gotten to so far, it's kind of staff's, kick at the can, and so, what we did is, we, I put together the, got requests from all the different department heads on capital costs for the upcoming year and, and the four or five years after that as well, and put it together on one sheet, met with them, obviously, they, everybody wants things done today, not enough money to do everything in the first year, so we sat down together and pushed projects out to the future to make the, the, I guess, the requirements or the, the wants for next year match up with the spending. So, the way I organized it for them, to make it, to make it quite straightforward, or at least I thought it was more straightforward, was the first section there, as, numbers one to nineteen, you see a little heading there, to complete, and that's because there's actual funding remaining from prior years, including this year, but budget money that was set aside, that wasn't spent. So, you'll see prior budget remaining in that first column, the next year is the budget for seventeen eighteen, which is what we're trying to plan for, and then we have four years of, of plans as well. So, you'll see, for instance, just to explain, the Cliff Street, number three, the Cliff Street, Brown Street project, we have a budget remaining of two-point-two million, but in order to complete the budget, we'll need another two-hundred-and-sixty out of the current years, or upcoming years' capital budget as well. So, that's how that works. So, and that's just for the first nineteen projects, after that, it's all new projects. So, on the first page, numbers twenty to thirty, our, are actually projects that were started with no budget in the current year, so we have to fund those next year, because we've committed to those things, or have started them already.
Just for clarification, for anybody who's looking at electronic copy, my pages...
Backwards.
Are backwards, so page one is the second page.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, the PDF didn't come out quite right.
The way it was scanned or something?
Just, just wanna make sure everybody was on the right page.
They're numbered right.
The numbers, the numbers are. So, the first page, or the page with numbers one to thirty, are things that we're kind of committed to or already started. So, when you get to the bottom, I've got totals there of, to finish the commitments and things that we've started, and then I have the total year funding, and then I left a balance of funding for other projects, just so directors understood that there's not a lot of money left in the current year, well, nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So, when we went to page two, that's where we got into all the ideas that were discussed prior years, thirty to forty, numbers forty-one to fifty-one are items that we think, or they wanted done in the current year, some you can see got pushed out, and then future projects that everybody kind of agreed to would be future projects are fifty to, fifty-two to seventy-two. So, you will notice, and I do wanna make a point, that numbers fifty and fifty-one, the Mariner Center YMCA project and the Arts Center, I don't have any budget in there, we really don't know what they will be, they'll probably be quite large, or they could be quite large, and we're not sure what kind of funding we'll have, but we have a couple options of how to work those when they do come up. One is, we could actually borrow money for a big project like that, others is, we have some reserves, we could take some money at reserves for big projects like that, those types of things, so they were just so big that if we tried to plug a number in there, it would just take three years worth of budget poten... take three years worth of budget potentially. So, we just, we'll deal with those as we come to them.
Thank you, Jerry. Maybe to Jeff, too. Uh, I see number thirty-one is street paving, and anybody that went campaigning in the last election door-to-door, probably in the top two or three concerns were the, uh, streets and the condition of the streets. Jeff, is there a way, and I don't know what it is, because if we do three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar in street paving, uh, we all know it costs anywhere between seven and eight-hundred-thousand dollars for a kilometer of street to pave. So, uh, if we have, uh, close to seventy kilometers of streets, so it should take us a hundred-and-forty years to get through the town of Yarmouth, is there a way or a process, and I think we talked about it at one time, six or seven years ago, about a true street paving program? And I know it's going to be cost prohibitive, but how can we think outside of a box to, some of the streets are in hard shape?
Uh, that's a, that's a good question. Over the last ten years, uh, we've accomplished about a kilometer a year of paving. And so, how do we do that? In, in this year's budget, as an example, we have three-hundred-and-fifty thousand that's dedicated for street paving, but we also have the Cliff Street, Brown Street project.
We had the Hawthorne Street a couple of years ago.
Right, so that, so that, those projects, and this year we'll also do Clements Avenue, uh, the section between, uh, Forest Street and Parade. So, that, because we're doing the underground works, the pavement ends up getting done as part of those projects. So, that line is not the only pavement we do. But even at that, we're only achieving about a kilometer a year. So, it would only take us seventy years to, to pave everything, uh, which is a small consolation. So, to answer your question, seriously, in terms of how do we, how do we pave streets on a, on a realistic rotation? Uh, well, not every street is the same. Star's Road is different than a, than a local residential street. Part of, part of the exercise we're doing right now with the asset management and condition assessment work is going to lead us to the realities of, uh, of, I guess, where our money should go for reinvestment, make it a little more sophisticated. So, uh, it will mean ultimately that we'll have to make choices. It's always about choices. So, if paving is, is, uh, you know, the, the top priority, then we look at the list and we, and we see what isn't paving, what is in any way discretionary in here that we could, we could push out to put more money in the, uh, in the paving line. But paving, you know, when we, we, we get into paving, the first question we'll ask ourselves before we fire up the paving machine is we'll say, well, what about the stuff underneath?
That's right.
So, what the asset management program will tell you is where you have your worst asphalt, your worst pipes, and where your best bang for your buck, excuse me, bang for your buck is, uh, when you go to, to break open a street and do the work, so.
And streets are the most tangible, the things that people see the most, people things use the most.
Every day.
So, if you went to some of the things in the budget from twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen to, uh, fire vehicle exit extraction system, people wouldn't know that, even though it's, uh, it needs it at the fire department, people, people's day-to-day life, the town of Yarmouth, that's, that's something that they wouldn't see. Right? Or, you know, some, uh, uh, the trommel screener for finished compost thing, right? They wouldn't, that's not a, but the other thing, the other thing, probably the two biggest concerns I had going door-to-door was the, the streets. And the other one was the, um, sidewalk between, uh, on the Haley Road, uh, from the school going across the top of the road, right?
Yeah.
And that was the biggest concern. So, I know, uh, your worship, you've been addressing that through, through, uh, Federation County municipalities. That's the fight I think we have to have with the federal government about some of the gas tax money. There's a disparity between how, uh, other jurisdictions municipalities get funded for roads and how we get funded, or, because we have to pay a hundred percent. But I think that's another, have another kick at the can, along with the immigration thing that you have to bring up.
Those things are, that paving piece is, is on the table in, in some sense, because I, and I, and I think that, um, no matter how many times I say it to the media or, or however I get the word out there, we pay for a hundred percent every single inch of our roads and sidewalks. And, and the province pays for, you know, the majority of the municipality. So, they're not, they have that money to go somewhere else, we don't. And we still have, what is it, seventy kilometers? Seventy kilometers of roads. And, and, and the truth is, too, because I got those questions when I knocked on the door, it's, not that it matters, but it's no different here than it is in any other place in, in Canada. It's, it's what it is with the, with the thaws and things like that. Wade? Did you have a answer for, do you want to answer first? Okay. Go ahead, Wade.
Okay, well, thank you, your worship. Mine actually reflects, goes back to the same issue. But what I was wondering about is, when you, when you talk about street paving, you're talking about actual paving stretches of road. What about, uh, patchwork and repairing some, some potholes? I know we're, we're dealing with that as well. Is that part of that particular budget area, or does that go somewhere else?
So, when we get to the operating budget, there is a line in there for, for what we call patch paving. So, that is paving that, that, uh, we have our staff go out and they mark specific, uh, problems on streets, and then the contractor will come around and they'll do, they'll do the work, they'll cut out the area, they'll put two lifts of asphalt on it, that's contracted out. And that's usually in the area of seventy-five to a hundred thousand a year? No?
No. It's a hundred-and-seventy-five or two-hundred thousand a year.
Okay, hundred-and-seventy-five to two-hundred. The other thing that we do is, a couple of years ago, we purchased our own asphalt recycler.
Yes.
And so, this time of year, uh, as, as we're approaching spring, our guys will go around and they will patch potholes, uh, with, with recycled, um, recycled asphalt. And, you know, we've had pretty good success. I mean, it's not, uh.
There are issues there.
It's not the professional, you know, job, but it does, it'll fill a hole, uh, that is better than cold patch and, uh, will, will hold longer and better.
Yeah.
But it's not the ultimate solution by, by any stretch. But it, it does help us in this whole issue of trying to keep the roads in decent shape.
Keeping everything together. Thank you.
Good. Okay, Jerry, you're on again.
Yeah, so, just one more quick comment on that, is maybe in the future, we can, uh, maybe break out the paving part of these bigger projects, just so people see, I mean, if that helps the presentation. I mean, when you're spending three million dollars on this big project on Cliff Brown Street, maybe, you know, eight-hundred thousand is actually paving, kind of thing, so people know that you're spending money on it. Yeah, so on the second page, it was kind of like newer stuff, uh, and just trying to spend, uh, the balance of the funding. So, at the very bottom, you'll see, uh, we've tried to balance and keep, keep the surplus shortfall to the surplus side. In the current year, there are the plan for eighteen, or seventeen, eighteen, you'll see we've come right down to, uh, twelve-hundred dollars left over to spend. So, uh, what we've done with the directors is, as we talked about the different projects, if we wanted to move something into the seventeen, eighteen budget line, we had to take an, an equal amount out of the seventeen, eighteen budget line and push it out to a future year or so. So, that's the process of what we've done with, as directors and staff, to come up with, uh, this first draft of plan, and what we wanted to get it in front of you and let you have a look at it. And if there's things you want to move around, keep in mind, if you push something into the seventeen, eighteen year, we got to find money or move something out into the future years as well.
Good. Any more questions for Jerry? Okay, so no decisions today, just so we all.
For information at this point.
Yep, good. Thanks, Jerry. Okay, Recreation? Frank's not here. Economic Development? Natalie?
Good afternoon. Uh, I've presented, uh, my, um, staff report and the marketing, uh, plan for twenty seventeen, eighteen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Natalie? I don't, I don't know how you do all your two day-to-day, honestly. And the social media plan, is that part of?
The social media plan is embedded within the marketing plan. Um, if it's to, at any time, if any of the counselors or the mayor would like to speak offline in any more detail on any of those items, I'd be happy to, to discuss that with you.
We good, everyone?
Yeah, just one.
Yeah.
Quick one, your worship. I know last town council meeting, we, I think we had a motion about the historic properties. Maybe we can talk to Natalie and maybe bring that back to the Heritage Committee, and maybe we'll bring in some, some of the real estate people and, and bang around some ideas to see, see how we can push that forward, if that's all right. Do we, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? Jeff, we just set up a, um.
You, you have a motion, uh, made at the last council meeting.
Okay.
And so, Natalie will, Natalie and I have discussed that motion, and she'll have a, a report.
Okay.
A report for you, probably by the, by the next council meeting.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, just in addition, I just want to introduce you to the three interns that have been working with us, uh, for the last three months. Next week is their last week of the three months' time they've been with us. Uh, and they have each, um, a very short one-minute presentation, just to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the scope of work they've done. So, for, I'll introduce all three of them, and they each will come up after they do their one-minute. Uh, I'll introduce Dean Pierce, Michaela DeVoe, and Jasmine Harry. So, Dean, you're up first, to give some feedback on our website, website analytics for the last two months.
I'll try to be as quick as I can. Just have to, uh, access the file here. Okay, it's an awkward position here, sitting on the cedon speaking. Um, what we're looking at here is, I just wanted to show you quickly what we've done with the website. We've redesigned it, taken it back to its raw kind of roots, um, deleted some of the information which was not relevant and not accurate, added to correct stuff that should be seen by the public on there. And, uh, I've done a quick comparison for you between last year, this time, and, and now. Uh, what we're looking at for basically highest is what, uh, we've done a daily, day-by-day hit rate on the website. So, how many people are individually visiting the website per day? So, the green bars will show you back in February of twenty sixteen, on the left-hand side here, you see we hit below fifty people as the highest number per day, uh, in February of twenty sixteen. Now, in twenty seventeen, you see we're hitting over three-hundred-and-fifty, um, as a single day, uh, visits to the website. We also have the average there, you can see that's increased with the yellow, the red bars in the center, and, uh, the lowest there, they have actually gone and hit an increase as well. We're not hitting zero as we were in February of twenty sixteen. Uh, we are actually hitting up, uh, above fifty, which, which is incredible progress from where we began. Uh, I wanted to talk to you as well, and just mention that, uh, since last year, since we've made the changes that we have this year, uh, we've actually seen, uh, about seventeen times the number of people on the Yarmouth, Town of Yarmouth website, uh, on average, seventeen times more, which is considerably, uh, successful. We've also, uh, in the month of March, which we only have, obviously, twenty-one days, of which I've actually recorded here, but, uh, we've seen a steady growth of twenty-eight percent compared to the prior year, which is, which is encouraging to see. So, that's everything your guys are doing in terms of, uh, council meetings, and, uh, it also includes all of the local press news that, that we've been working on for the website. So, if you have any questions, please go ahead.
Good stuff.
Good job.
Thank you.
Hi. So, I have a video for everyone. Um, we know that the website brings a lot of hits. Great. Awesome. But there are some pages on the website that we want them to hit more, such as applying for a grant, building permits, so on and so forth. So, Natalie brought the idea up to me about creating a video. So, I've created that video to bring more attention to the places on the website that we want them to see. So, just give me one second, and I can bring that up.
Do we have audio?
I'm going to need sound.
Do we have sound, Jeff?
It's their sa, I was going to say, you can put the microphone.
Yeah. She has a really beautiful voice.
On our homepage, you'll find updated public notices, the latest Town of Yarmouth news, current programs and initiatives at a community center. Yarmouth is an amazing place to live, not just because of what they're in to do, but the people who live here. The community tab has general information for living, working, and experience in Yarmouth. The Town of Yarmouth is divided into several departments, each with its own unique responsibilities. Finally, you need to get building permits, economic development, town contacts, and more. The Town of Yarmouth is responsible for a wide range of services, from roads and waste collection to business startup and development services. This is where you'll find what you need to build your future in Yarmouth. Discover everything from local artwork and artisanal creations, world-famous brands and personal care in downtown Yarmouth. While your business is here, click on Learn More. Be a Like To section, break through the most popular pages on our site. Apply for a grant, pay your taxes, report a problem, take the bus, apply for a development permit, and more.
Good job. That's helpful.
Any questions?
No, it's really, it's really good. It's helpful.
Good.
It just kind of guides people.
So, that's going to be on the homepage of the website, where you see that anchor shot. It'll be launched right there, effective this week.
Perfect.
As well as the Facebook page.
Excellent.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so, one of the things that I've been working on, um, is the facade program. So, I've actually been going out to the different businesses that have already had their facades completed and doing a short interview with them. And today, the facade program page has been launched. So, if you go on the Town of Yarmouth website, under Government, and then Programs and Initiatives, there's a tab called Downtown Facade Spotlights. So, there you'll see, um, most of the businesses that I've talked to so far, there's still a few more that need to go on there. Uh, they're on a mosaic view on there. So, when you click on there, it'll take you to their individual page, um, which you can see on the right-hand side. It shows the before and after picture and, um, two questions that I have asked them. So, why was it important for your business to participate in the facade program, and what impact has your facade made on your business? So, their responses are on there. We're hoping that this will draw people to the website and they can see the changes that other businesses have gotten, and it'll make more people want to apply for it. So, we'll, we'll have a lot more changes to come. And also, soon, we will be doing the spotlights on the different businesses on the Facebook page. So, that'll also draw people to the website, because it'll be a call-to-action link, and that will increase traffic and also encourage people to check it out and hopefully apply for it.
Awesome.
How many videos did you do?
They're not videos, they're just, uh, pictures up there.
Okay.
With the interview question and the interview answers.
Okay.
Yep. So, it's really similar to what we've done with the downtown directory.
So, the, so the, the, um, the response is to either apply to the facade program if it exists, or to get excited enough to do it on your own? If, if Jerry can't find the money.
And, and they can see that the difference that it has made.
Yeah. Good. Good stuff. I think that's going to get a lot of hits.
There's actually a new feature that it's not abled right now, but it'll have a sliding screen. So, one side, it'll be the before picture, when you slide it, you'll see the after. So, it'll be a great visual.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks to all three of you. It must have been fun working upstairs. It must have been fun working upstairs with Natalie and the team.
I love them alone.
Yeah. Good stuff.
They know what they're doing.
Thanks, everyone. Really appreciate it. Okay, anything else Natalie, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright. Business arising, Dog Park Culvert. CAO?
Your Worship, at our last council meeting, we had a presentation from the committee that is leading the Dog Park Initiative. And as part of their presentation, they requested that the town undertake to install the culvert across the ditch at Jarvis Road so that the property was accessible and so that they could begin to maybe utilize the property. And so, because we don't make decisions on the evenings of presentations, I took it upon myself to add it to this agenda so you could at least have a discussion. And if there was direction for staff, that you could have that opportunity to give direction.
Okay. So, where do we want to go with this? What are you thinking? I'm gonna tell you. Is it something we need to do now? Or we can wait? Go ahead, Counselor Hood.
Well, I'm so steamed up of this useless piece of Microsoft hardware. Crap that I bought from West Edmonton Mall for seven hundred friggin' dollars. Windows 8, it's the worst monster that, and your website to boot. But anyway, here we are, an hour in, and I can see what I wanna, I can see the, it just won't display it. I cannot find your letter, I've been looking for a week.
What letter?
It won't click, you're telling me they can't load it from a webmail and this and that?
Oh, okay.
Not, I wanted to come back to that because I missed the last part of what Jeff said about that culvert.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we had the presentation from Mr. Trask concerning the Dog Park. And we have the report and it's a pretty park and a quite ambitious park. What they were asking of the town at this point was to put in the culvert so there was access to the property. And they had talked to the town engineer about what kind of culvert that would be. And it's in order to keep, yeah, exactly, in order to keep the ditch functioning properly, it was sized and all. So, they would like us to do that so that they could access the property and begin perhaps using it even before it's fully developed and obviously access for development.
You want to keep going, Counselor? Go ahead, Cliff.
So, my question was, what I took from the presentation was there, the takeaway was they were going to go out and fundraise for, I'm not sure whether it was a hundred percent or whether we were gonna be like part of the fundraising or what the concept was. But even we're talking big numbers there, are they gonna, what's the sense of how much they're gonna raise for the park itself?
Eighty?
I think, I think it was in a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar range, minus the eleven thousand dollars for the culvert. So, I think it was in the...
So, we had on here, what is it Jerry, if I look at this, like, close to five thousand from us or something?
For the first phase.
That was it. Forty-seven seventy-six.
Yeah, they didn't ask for anything at council beyond the culvert.
There it is, next year, Dog Park, forty-seven seventy-six.
I was very impressed by that, but it's a two-phase project. It's four, the second phase would make it over, what, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something. Anything coming from our sisters up the road here?
Um, no, I don't know that they've asked.
Do we have the money in the budget for this year? Or some, something we should refer to budget for next fiscal?
What do you think, Jerry?
You're talking a few, I don't know how much it'll cost.
Okay, so...
What's the value, are you looking to try and do, is the culvert, new culvert?
Okay, so, so under twenty, and Don's saying, and it's a good point, they need the culvert to do anything else. Do they need that to do anything else? And if that's the case, then we need to figure that out pretty soon.
When I heard, when I heard the presenters say that they were going to go out and fundraise all but the culvert, I was pretty quick to try to find a way to jump on that bandwagon and fund the culvert. That's where I was on it.
I'll make a motion that the Town of Yarmouth fund the Dog Park culvert or install the Dog Park culvert.
I'll second the motion.
Providing the motion is a subject to our budget deliberations and...
Yeah.
You had, good to add that?
That's good.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, any more discussion on that?
Questions?
Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Internal audit update? You probably, you probably put it on, but...
I think it came under your CAO.
I think you were gonna ask, anyway.
Oh, is that right? Okay, so, we're expecting for August Committee of the Hall, or so, August, or April? I'll tell you what, I got my months mixed up today.
That's alright.
April, Committee of the Hall. So, that's the update.
Yeah, that'd be April, April Committee of the Hall, you'll have the response and...
I believe you'll have a report.
We'll have the report, okay. Is that a public document?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, good, thank you.
Good, okay. Business, letter of condolence, deputy?
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter of condolence to former Mayor Marsha McCackern on the passing of her husband Gerald.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, go ahead deputy.
Your Worship, I think we had this conversation maybe two meetings ago. And I just want to ask the CAO about maybe the next steps that we talked about in regards to the returning officer and his or her responsibilities when it comes to the Election Act and eligibility and all the other things. What the scope is and where can we go with, where can we go from here?
Go ahead.
Your Worship, I can only assume that the Minister of Municipal Affairs has responsibility for that act. I think maybe if that is true, or if it isn't, it might be worthwhile meeting with our MLA and who holds that seat and talk about generally the issue that we have and seek his support for his staff to hear our concerns and draft amendments or consider amendments to the act that would strengthen the role of the returning officer.
So, do you want to make a motion, you and I?
I'll make a motion that would be with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Zach Churchill's, in regards to roles and responsibilities for the returning officer.
Okay?
But I have a comment. And that is, have we had any, did we refer any of this to the Chief Electoral Officer?
Yes. When the issue was being investigated, I know that he was interviewed and the issues at hand were discussed, yeah.
Good. Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, Counselor Cleveland, Sewer Repairs?
Thank you, Your Worship. In the very short time that I've been on council, I've been approached about three times by citizens regarding situations where they've had breaks in their sewage lines causing backups in their homes. Now, when this happens, the entire cost of the repair by policy lands in the lap of those citizens, including road repair, right down to asphalt laid and flaggers used while the work is being done. And there's also a requirement that a monetary deposit must be left with the town for a period of, I think, a year to cover any problems that the town may have with the road repair over time. It's a terrible, it's a sad situation when it happens generally, but the whole situation becomes a huge expense, not covered by insurance and can be financially devastating. In addition to the people who have approached me while I've been a counselor, which is a pretty short time, I know of other friends of mine who have dealt with this as well. Now, I understand that when something breaks on your property, you should pay for its repair by all means. But once those lines go to the road and in some cases across the road, making citizens cover those costs doesn't seem particularly fair, just to me. So, when it comes to water line breaks, the policy's different in that once the line leaves your particular property, the individual's no longer on the hook for things like road repair. And so, what this leads up to is I'd like to make a request for a staff report on why the policy is that way with an eye towards at some point revisiting that bylaw, which is bylaw number nine, the sewer connection bylaw.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I'll say something. Cost me ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, you were one.
Ten thousand dollars.
And I didn't even count you as one of the friends.
Right, and...
My apologies.
And then, of course, people saying, how are you getting that done free? I'm like, no, it wasn't free, it was ten thousand dollars of money we didn't have.
Well, I've had a couple of people in my, in my office almost in tears and I, I just can't do that. It's gotta be taken care of.
And then the big question is why? Here's the CAO, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate this. We've, we deal with a number of these circumstances every year. And I'd be happy to provide a staff report on this so that council can discuss which direction they want to go with it. I think there's, there is some, there is some why to it all. And I can articulate that in a report back to council. And I can relate it to the difference with the, with the water versus the sewer as well, to make that clear.
Good. Excellent. Moved and seconded, questions being called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Is there a rebate policy maybe? No, I'm just kidding.
Won't be retro.
Won't be retro. I'm gone. Okay. Correspondence for action, David Oly has sent us a letter. And he's been nominated candidate for the New Democratic Party for the next election. And he did the same thing back then. So, he is asking us to grant either a leave of absence from now until Election Day in the next provincial election or a leave of absence from the dropping of the writ until Election Day in the next provincial election. My preference is the second one.
And he has no problem with the one?
I don't think he does. And I did mean to call him today, but I didn't get a chance to. But I think he loves what he does and he's good, he's good at it. And I think, you know, from the dropping of the writ, we don't know when the election's gonna be.
I think the second one's better. I'll make a motion that we accept our town carage request for a leave of absence from the dropping of the writ till Election Day, the next provincial election.
Thank you, Counselor Hood.
No, I just, I'll second the motion, I agree with both of you on that one.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Oh, that's the only one for action there. We've got some more letters in there. Additions. Date of the May Town Council. Okay, so, we're going, I need a motion to move it to the eighteenth simply because we have UNSM Fall Conference, or Spring Conference during that day, and we usually push it. So, it would be moved to May eighteenth. And I better check if I'm even, I guess it won't matter from here or not. Have to do it. It'll be May eighteenth. Yeah, no, I...
I'll make a motion that...
Yeah, 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 I'm in Newfoundland, I'm flying back that day, so I'll be back at night.
Make a motion that we move May's council meeting to May the eighteenth.
Okay. May eighteenth, you want to second that, Don?
Yep, second.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Sorry, did you?
Yeah, just, it's a moment just to talk about our bylaw on that. So, anytime we want to change a regularly scheduled council meeting, that decision has to be made at least one month prior at a regular scheduled council meeting. So, this will come up at the April council meeting, which meets the requirement of your bylaw. In the bylaw, the only option is the third Thursday of the month. So, if you're thinking about changing a council meeting, your only option, a regularly scheduled one, your only option is the third Thursday as the alternative. So, just thought I'd mention that, I don't know if you've talked about that before with, since the new council. And just thought it was a moment to...
Yep, good.
That was our Committee of the Hall?
No. It would be, it would be the twenty-fifth, yes, Committee of the Hall. Second and four, for the Committee of the Hall? Maybe you can scape it?
Yeah.
Sorry, Cliff, I have to torment you. Okay. So, I'm gonna be there in a month. Okay, so, ten B. Committee of the Hall meeting, I'm just gonna ask this now, that we have a phone call on Tuesday at ten and we're wondering if we've, we've got a couple more things that we want to cover. Can anybody stay? Can we go from ten till noon or can we, do we need to do that at a different time?
In a way, but there's gonna be other ones after this one, we're gonna have two or three on this.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're votes, Counselor Barry here, but...
Alright. So, whatever we do, we'll update him, I don't think it'll be anything. Yeah, okay. So, we're gonna, don't need a motion, we'll just get Linda to call on that. And ten C, water. You were gonna speak about a water meeting or a water, I lost it.
Worship, I don't know if I need to make a motion, but I would like to have a water meeting on the agenda for the regular meeting coming up two weeks.
Okay, so you want a separate water utility meeting?
I think I have to do that if I want to make a report on the water utility. I want to report to council. And my report will deal with, it'll be an update on some issues that we're dealing with at Lake George.
Okay, good. So, Linda, you're gonna make sure that on the agenda, the council agenda, be an update?
And if anybody in the public thinks that I'm a little bit crotchety this afternoon, I was in court all morning in Kentville.
You're not crotchety.
Rough old drive last night and this morning.
That's right.
I don't get paid to be nice.
Well, you must be wealthy. You know what, I think he just thinks he's crotchety. Oh, my. You got one minute.
I may look like, I may look like I'm a computer klutz, but let me tell you, I had a telephone call on my Bluetooth in the car, driving in the slush this afternoon from court to here. And by the time I got to Yarmouth, the dear person that I was talking to sent me a picture of her debit card. And I've been into the bank since then, before I came here, with my debit card and made a transfer from my debit card to her debit card. And things are gonna be hopping in Saint of X tonight, probably.
Yes. Congratulations to her. That's good, good... Okay. It's amazing what you can do. Okay, so we did, there's nothing else there, is there anything in camera? Okay? So, motion to adjourn. Good to go.